Okay, everybody here.
Julie.
Julie, Frances.
Nancy.
Nancy, okay, all three of us are here. Okay, roll call, visitors' comments. We'll go right down the list here. Do you have anything tonight?
Uh, under consent order, we have a list of new business.
That's okay, you can go ahead.
Now or wait till?
No, you can go ahead.
No, I just want an update on it, anything other than any more violations from the 78, that was a few months ago.
Yeah, we had most of stuff sent in, right?
You'll see on there, the new business is the, there's correspondence from DEP.
Yeah.
We got two.
We have the copies here.
We got two violations, two fines from, if you were here at a meeting two months ago, when Dennis Beck was here and said he's not a circuit rider. I don't know if anybody remembers that.
No.
Okay, he sat here and he said he didn't have to do the circuit rider, because he's not a circuit rider. And DEP fined us for that, because he didn't get it done.
Yeah, he needed to complete.
So now, we called Dennis Beck, and Dennis Beck is calling DEP, because we asked him if he got any email from when DEP told him that he didn't have to do that. You understand what I mean?
Okay.
Because he was supposed to write in a circuit rider, and what was the other one, write the...
Uh, well, we had to do...
There was two things he was supposed to do.
The management plan and the plant operations.
Yeah.
Uh, plan, was supposed to be done.
Was that a big fine or?
Three thousand.
They're fifteen hundred bucks apiece. Anything you laid on is fifteen hundred bucks.
So we're trying to dispute it.
Trying to dispute that, he has to dispute that, he's the one who sat here and said he didn't have to do that.
He had a death in the family, though, so I've called them three times, but then we found out he had a death, so it'll probably be next week before we can get ahold of them.
The thing is, we have to know by the fifteenth and send in our fines.
So he knows about it already, and he should be calling us back by Monday.
That's that one.
So we gotta know.
And prior to all the other violations?
Everything else, Donovan, everything else is caught up?
I haven't got anything for the month, besides that letter on the 22nd for the education.
What about the previous operator, anything, or is he just, anything going back on him?
Uh, not at this time.
Oh, okay.
Not at this time.
Most of the, this is from the consent order.
Yeah.
Donovan got all the paperwork done ahead of time and sent it in.
Yeah.
And however, it had to be approved by DEP before we sent it to our customers.
The public education?
Part of it.
The letter that they sent out to.
What have you got in the mail saying the lead and copper? I used the same one that has been used the last couple of years, assuming it had been already approved the last couple of years from DEP, so send it through. Apparently, there's a lot of things wrong with it, even though it was approved in the previous year, so I'm not sure why they approved it if it was wrong. So I made those adjustments, and we mailed it out today.
Today?
Today.
But they did want it approved before it went to the public, so we're probably going to have, are we going to have to resend it to the public?
Yes.
Because it wasn't approved first, before they sent it out.
So we'll be sending you another letter.
So we'll be sending you another letter to straighten that one out, so.
Okay, just, uh, quick question, how'd you do another water sample?
We, uh...
Because like, two weeks ago, I did one, now I got another one.
Well, yeah.
We, DEP wants us to do lead and copper sample on each source, so we have to do one on the jersey, one on Burns, one on the well, one on Burns and the well, so there's gonna be multiple samples.
I mean, it's, oh, it just seems like, you have different labs doing it now?
Uh, we were going straight with analytical, analytical got shut down by DEP.
It got shut down?
Yes, so now we went to white oak laboratory, and we're going strictly with them, we're not playing this.
They're out sources, they're testing.
Uh, they do some testing there, but they outsource, but everything's gonna be going through them, so we're not playing this. Guess who I'm getting today?
And it's a 200.8?
Yeah, it's whatever DEP regulations are, because they have to abide by the state.
The draw frequency was shut down, and you said so?
Yeah. They, they had an inspection, apparently failed it, and they voluntarily revoked their, um, DEP accreditation. So everything that they, if we were to send stuff to them, it would go all the way to Kattanning, so we'd have to pay shipping for everything from them to go to Kattanning, so.
Where's the white oak at?
Uh, Ridgeway.
Ridgeway, oh.
I guess it's the old Ambler Station, out by Ridgeway.
On the Ridgeway-Johnsonberg Road.
Yeah.
Oh.
Going toward Ridgeway once you make that.
Oh, okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Do that one?
Uh, not really, as long as they're doing the same tests that was being done in analytic.
Yeah, gotta do same to all three.
It's just that the bottles didn't have any preservative in them.
So she explained that to me, we, the preservatives, they can do, you have a fourteen-day hold from when they're taken, without a preservative in it. As long as there is a preservative put in it within the fourteen days, and then is put into a chill, in like, a fridge, you have six months. So they're gonna add the additive at the lab whenever we deliver it. White oak prefers not putting it in, just because the public's handling the samples rather than us, so it's less chance for spill or whatever from the customer, so. Yeah, that's just their preference.
Next?
Next. I invite the minutes collected, what you have told me, and it is not like that. I said that the Pennsylvania municipal authorities code was what I was quoting, not the bylaws. And I did not say they did not resign. I said they resigned, but according to the Pennsylvania code, they should still be attending meetings until the supervisors appoint new ones to replace them. That is what I said, not what you have here in the minutes. And then, I'd like to talk about your rules and regulations a little bit. I have a copy here, but, uh, it's not the latest, but I don't think this one particular section I wanted to talk about has changed.
What page is it, on the bar?
Well, page sixteen, rule eight.
Okay.
Okay. A unit is understood to be a singular purpose structure space with individual water needs, such as living quarters, and they give examples of a house, mobile home, or apartment, school, hotel, motel, et cetera. The final determination of a unit shall be made by the authority.
Mm-hmm.
I really think you wanna maybe talk about taking that last sentence out, because when you start going away from the basic rules, you're establishing a precedent, so that means you're not gonna be treating everybody the same. But your unit here needs, you people need to discuss that and bring it up to date. For example...
You mean the definition of unit?
Yeah, unit is just like a motel.
The whole paragraph.
Hotel or hotel.
Uh, for example, you don't have camps in there.
That's on another whole page. Camps are on a different page.
Well, but do you consider a camp a unit?
That's, that's one.
Well, then you should have it in this section also.
All's I know is just a camp.
We'll take a look at that.
You also, you also do not have St. Joseph, uh, low-income housing included in the definition?
We're looking at all this stuff right now.
Well, I'm just giving you my thoughts.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm writing them down.
Yeah, got it.
I would urge you to have a workshop with the sewage authority about this, your definition of units. They go by equivalent dwelling units. And Fran, you know more about this than I do. For years, there's been a controversy over how they do their equivalent dwelling units and the water authority. So they used to have a list, uh, they called it the EDU schedule. They listed restaurants, hotels, it was like a whole page.
The sewage has it.
Uh, yeah, sewage. I don't know if they still have it or not, because like I say, I don't know, I got about a date once. But, I mean, basically, their rate schedule's good. The only problem is, they don't follow any of it. So an example is a hotel. Is a hotel just a hotel, or does it have apartments? It rents rooms? It has a restaurant? So I think the board needs to discuss that.
How many meters does it have? How many meters? What size line and how many meters?
Well, that's what you need to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, to me, a hotel is, does have a restaurant and rooms they rent. That is what, to me, does define what a hotel is.
Well, you're renting it out.
Well, you need to define it in more detail.
Okay, yeah, I think it, yeah, depends on what size line and how many meters.
I'm sure it's marked on that paper.
And usually, some of them don't have a bathroom to the unit the people are staying in, there's a share.
Well, how would you know who used what, if it doesn't, if it isn't individually metered?
I take a lot of our hotels and stuff like that are metered by one meter, and the owner just pays whatever the bill is.
That's the way it's set up.
Well, you may also want to call some other municipalities, and maybe City Saint Mary's and see what they do.
Do you know what they do? Just asking.
With all due respect, I mean...
I, I looked into it a few years ago, okay, but, I mean...
We're looking into it.
They would help you with this.
Okay.
And, and one example is the sewage authority, I mean, they have the, on their list, uh, the St. Joseph Terrace, they had it listed as a commercial business. It's not a commercial business. It's a nonprofit, low-income housing, special housing. So you need to look around in the valley and bring this up to date.
Yeah, you know, Christine, I appreciate your input, but the thing that boggles my mind is how long have these authorities been in existence, and they still don't have this worked out?
Well, one...
I mean, that's mind-boggling.
Well, and Fran, you know, it's been going on for years, but the thing is this, okay, one of the things is, if the sewage authority went by the rate schedule, you would get more readiness-to-serve money.
Well, we, we, we were doing out there, it comes down to two things, because you're paying by the meter. You see what I'm saying? You either get a rate schedule, or you pay by the meter. And Jay Township pays by the meter, on both parties.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the thing we come up with back then, with the argument, and she'll remember, and probably Chloe will remember, the problem that you have is when you have a business here, then a living space quarters up here. You see what I'm saying?
On the same meter?
On the same meter.
Oh, okay.
So your hotels, motels, or whatever you wanna call them, would be on one meter, because it's just, that's what it is.
As long as they're paying the usage, though, what's, what's the problem?
Well, you're, you're missing a readiness-to-serve charge.
Oh, you're missing the readiness-to-serve, yeah.
You're missing a readiness-to-serve charge.
I get it, I get it.
If you have one upstairs, that is down to me. Well, we'll go over that, we go over that.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully, it's in there.
One other thing, you do have, I mean, say you have a building with a couple of apartments in it.
Yes, that's a whole different subject.
One meter or two meters. And keep in mind, the St. Joseph Terrace has twenty-two residential apartments. Each unit, each apartment...
Pays a readiness-to-serve.
Pays a readiness-to-serve charge.
Yeah.
So if you have other apartments...
Then it goes by one meter.
Both apartments should be paying readiness-to-serve.
I agree with all that.
No, she just said they each pay a readiness-to-serve.
Yeah, but they, it goes by one meter.
But they have one meter?
One meter for the whole building, yeah.
But they have the bathrooms and the...
The only thing about the meter, I'm talking about what you're paying.
We know that.
And readiness-to-serve charges, the meter is your problem.
Well, at that point, the meters are running, what, three hundred bucks for the complete setup? Who's gonna fork out the money and buy all these meters?
Nobody.
I mean, that's...
Well, she's not talking about meters, she's talking about charging a readiness-to-serve.
Yeah, she's talking about readiness-to-serve.
What she's trying to say is they pay a readiness-to-serve, but...
Per unit.
Per unit, in one building.
But they have one meter.
And that's what I was trying to say, if you have certain how many apartments, if you have a business here and house up here, you have to separate it.
So they'd have a very large readiness-to-serve bill?
Yeah.
If one is downstairs, and one is upstairs, say there's two living... Now, I'll tell you, my, my house, where I lived, is an apartment building, used to be.
Yeah.
And I had two separate meters when the storage was put in.
Yeah.
Okay? They put two separate meters, and then we paid two separate bills, one for upstairs and one for downstairs, because we had to separate it. You understand what I'm saying?
Is that empty now out there?
No, it's all one now, so I made it one house.
Oh.
But years ago, that's how we paid. There was an apartment upstairs, they paid, and the downstairs paid their own. It was on their own meter.
Yeah, and St. Joe's has a bathroom in each one of its apartments.
Yep, yep.
And some of the hotels, none of them have a bathroom.
But you're getting your readiness-to-serve. You're getting your readiness-to-serve.
Yeah, and they pay one readiness-to-serve on the hotels.
Yeah, yes. Okay, we'll discuss that, and I'm sure we have something written down on that.
We have Julie.
Joe?
Yeah, these guys are carrying these laboratories, they're testing your lead and copper at the wells and, you ever pick up locations? What kind of piping you have there?
It's in your house.
It's your...
It's your house.
Pipes. Our, our system's good, we have all plastic and, you know...
Why are you taking lead and copper then?
Because that's the question you wanna call, you know?
No.
It's in the house. For somebody that's sat on the waterboard, you should know this already.
It's in the house. Your pipes.
Like you said before, you're taking it out of the wells.
Let Donovan.
Donovan.
The consent order has us, each source has different levels of iron, different sources of manganese, different sources of conductivity, and each of those can affect the leaching of heavy metals into lines in the house. We've taken samples off of each of the sources, and they have no lead and copper and very, very, very little lead and copper.
Not in natural occurrence.
Yes, um, so we have to take lead and coppers from the twenty points throughout the system, where the houses have been handpicked to reflect the highest points of lead and copper, because they're usually the oldest houses, the ones with known bad plumbing, with lead and solder joints, and like, even potentially lead pipes. And we have to get a lead and copper sample from the three different sources, so we can see how the houses inside, what the leaching would be specifically off of each of those sources.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but my question was, why do you have to take it at the source? Because you pretty much explained that all.
We, we aren't...
That's the base point to start with.
Yeah, we aren't taking it at the source. That was done...
Well, they said that earlier up front table.
They, the last lead and copper samples I have for sources was done with a feasibility study in October of 2020. Um, and that was just, I think that was to verify for the phosphorus change, with the corrosion control change. Um, I think where they got it mixed up was, we are switching sources to then sample the houses in the system.
Right, well, I see why you're checking the source, because that's where you start from, the whole day.
But we're not, at the moment, whenever we're doing these samples right now, we're not doing sources, because we've already taken samples from the sources, and there's no lead and copper there. If, if there were high levels there...
You and us, and earlier, they were, they were taking samples at the sources.
No.
Misunderstood. We're using different sources.
Yes.
And treating the chemicals that are naturally occurring with the corrosion control to prevent leaching in different people's homes. That's what you missed.
The leaching is out of your pipes, in your house.
Yeah, it's not at the source. But we're changing sources to verify that our corrosion control works no matter which source we're using.
For instance, because the well has a high conductivity, it could make everything slightly more, it'd make it leach a little more in a house, if they had copper or lead pipes or soldering joints. So if suddenly, we have a bunch of hits on, when we're only on the well, we might have to look into abandoning the well, because it's corro, you know, it's corrosive.
Acety, is what you're saying.
So that's what these tests are for.
Okay.
Now, another question I have on these consent things going on here right now, who was responsible for each one of these consents? You said you have two separate ones.
Oh, well...
The last two.
The two, last two violations that we got, the operator in responsible charge was tasked with getting a management plan and a plant operation, and that was not done. And the second violation...
He wants to know who?
Oh, well, it was Dennis.
Dennis Beck.
Dennis Beck was the operator in responsible charge. And the second violation was on Donovan, who...
Wasn't a violation.
No.
Well, it's, it's a notice.
Well, you got nine points, fifteen dollars each, huh?
No, 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 the...
There was two studies, that's why.
No, so...
Okay, that'll do it.
Section E and section F are specific to circuit riders in the consent form. They are basically standard operating procedure and a, for layman's terms, I'm the circuit rider, this is what I'm doing specifically at this plant, this is how many hours I'm working, it's just a plan specifically for that operator of how he's going to run the plant.
Okay, now, that's not my question, I ask, who's responsible for each fine?
Now, if I could finish, those two sections, E and F, were due October 15th. Um, Dennis, being a circuit rider, I don't know if he was under the false assumption that he wasn't a circuit rider, or what, but he did not file these in the proper time, so those fines were sent. I'm not a circuit rider, so I was never in charge of that.
When was the first order sent out, this fine?
The fines?
Uh, let's see, the fine was...
Like here, a couple months ago, or?
No, no, October 15th. They missed the deadline of October...
They sent down, yeah.
Yeah, that was this, this board, this problem. Dennis was the operator in responsible charge.
So you have two fines and fifteen hundred dollars each.
That's correct, that's for that one. This one is no fine, it's a...
Redo.
Yeah, you didn't, you sent out the public notification before DE approved your...
Public notification.
Public note, so Donovan sent the new public notification in for DEP approval, and we'll resend out those letters.
Right.
So that's all that that was.
Can you get it, Dr. Cottrell, how many days were they behind, like, one or two days?
For the...
Four days?
For the public notification?
Yeah.
It's due November 19th, so...
We're, we're ahead of the game.
Be like on their paperwork, so they...
No.
Know what's happening, yeah?
No, it was due November 19th, so it's November 4th, and we sent out, so we're fifteen days ahead.
And still got fined, right?
No, we did not get fined for the public notification.
You're talking about the second one now.
The public notification, yes.
Okay.
The guy who got fined on that. And I just heard them say, you said fines.
My brain hurts.
Yes.
Okay.
You're right.
We're done.
You're done, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay, we need an approval of the...
Minutes with the changes that Christine asked for.
Right here, we have to do approval of the agenda, and she wanted the agenda changed, or, no, she wanted the last thing to change.
No, she wanted the meeting minutes changed to reflect what she actually said.
Okay, we'll, when we get on that, then we'll do that, okay? Okay, I need approval.
Uh...
There's no dollar amount on my copy. Is there a dollar amount to the bills?
Oh, my God.
The state was just all here.
Twenty thousand fifteen.
That's the least of our problems, Joe.
Okay.
Is it twenty thousand?
No, 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 in a minute, in a minute. The bill, approval of bills, the amount is blank.
Oh.
Where do you see the amount?
Approval of the bills, yeah, it should've been filled in, you're right.
All right, here, yeah, okay, all right.
Uh, whatever the bills were last month, we'll have to dig it out.
Okay, let's go back here.
Forty-seven, nine, fifty-seven, ninety-eight.
Forty-seven, ninety-eight.
Thank you, Christine.
Forty-seven, ninety-eight.
Forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, fifty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Got it.
Yeah, I see it right there.
Okay, do I hear an approval for the...
Uh, I approve the, I make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes that we just discussed.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll change that.
Approval, okay.
Get over here, please.
Okay, don't you have a thing?
No.
All right, the monthly meeting, and we just did that. Treasurer's report, you wanna read that treasurer's report off of that?
Okay. Let's find it. Okay, the treasurer's report, October 2021. Balance in the checking account is of nine thirty twenty twenty-one, thirty thousand one twenty-one twenty. Water payment deposits, thirty-seven thousand nine twenty seventy-seven. Interest income, eighty-eight cents. Houston Township, thirty-nine thousand, uh, fifty-four dollars and ten cents. Total deposits, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Accounts payable were twenty thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Balance in the checking account as of ten thirty twenty-one, eighty-six thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Our balance in the savings account as of September 30th, 2021, two hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Interest income was ten dollars fifty-three cents. Balance in checking account as of, as of October 31st, 2021, two hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second question.
Yes.
Why, why did the signature go down?
Yeah, you didn't add the...
You should've added the ten dollars and fifty-three cents onto it.
Yeah.
Oh, my bad.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, you're learning, yeah.
Two fifty-six.
Two sixty-six. Two sixty-seven oh three.
Two sixty-seven oh three.
That is correct, that's what I get off.
Okay.
Two fifty-six...
Three sixty-seven.
Three sixty-seven oh three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Okay, approval of the bills, anybody got any question on the bills?
Oh, let's see the bills, right there, put them over here, somebody might want to...
All right, wait a second, there you go. That's very, very good. Any question on the bills?
Yeah, I have one, Fran.
Go ahead. Give me the number. What number?
Number eighteen.
Go for it. Valley Farm Market Fuel, yeah?
It says zero.
That's just because the bill hasn't been paid yet.
The bill hasn't come yet.
Oh, it hasn't come?
Yes.
So you're saying seven or seven hundred some miles on the truck?
Yeah. When the bill comes, it'll be on the next one. Okay, anymore? Need a motion? With approval of the bills?
I make a motion to...
Yeah, one more, one more, please, too. This, uh, buffalo, that's sort of the airline, which section is that, up here in Woods, up back here?
Yes.
Redwood?
And the rails are pulled on in line?
Yeah.
There's no more rails there?
Better not be.
This one, this-
That's for Redwood.
This is for, for Redwood, yeah, yeah, that's down here.
Okay.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, that every year, though.
Yeah, 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 it's for Redwood, yeah.
Okay.
One more question, land, some hot bagger, what's that? Hot baggers, that's from Blacktop out here.
That's Blacktop.
Where at? On Kennedy.
When they had to go to New Boys and get the Blacktop, yeah.
Blacktop on the street.
On the street.
On Kennedy.
Right, yeah, right up here.
We had to put hot patch in, we had to put, Hot Bakers from Dew Boys, you ought to know that.
That's just spout, Ron.
Okay. I need approval for the bills.
I make a motion to approve the bills as they are.
Do I hear a second? I'll make the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents' letter.
That's the two DEPs.
Those, yeah.
We already went over them.
Those are the two letters from DEP, if anyone wants to read them, they're sitting up here.
But we couldn't make copies.
Okay, maintenance report?
Yes. Yeah, no, it needs replaced.
Okay, I'll let you do the maintenance report.
Uh, maintenance report, uh, we did a tap on the Kane Road, we're gonna have to dig that up and, uh, move it down further on the line to appease the guy, I put it in the wrong spot, caused big headache, so I'm gonna get that from, correct it.
Did you get a place to go with it?
Yes, I, I got it.
Get a written paper before you do anything on it.
Okay.
From now on, make sure you get a written paper from the owner, okay?
Um, the distribution meter has been installed, it's updated, it's working now.
Everything's done?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the power hydrant is two fifty-five and five fifty-five has been run over, we've got culprit. I'm gonna touch base with the officer to get some source information, so she can buy the new hydrant.
Okay.
Other than that, it's basically the same.
Same stuff?
We've had the compressor burn up in the plant, uh, that's been taken care of, uh, put a new motor on it, knock on wood, likes good.
Okay.
Other than that, it's been, we've had, uh, I assisted national people up here to find our water line, they had it leaked up here.
Okay.
They just, they're boring a new line across the road, so I was present for them to do that, in case they hit our line bored, we can shut it down easier. I have an estimate on four valves that need replaced in the plant. Two valves are up in the pump house, which we can get by without replacing them, but there's two valves that are inside the plant on the filters that we need to replace, because we have to shut the valves off to do, um, core samples out of the filters, and without shutting these off, it's almost impossible to.
What price?
Uh, for these two valves are one thousand, one eighty-five, and it is a four-inch flange gate valve. Uh, the only reason I'm asking to replace them-
Is that one or four?
That is for two, uh, for all four is two thousand, seven sixty-eight.
Well, we replaced the one that needs replaced.
All right, there's two that need replaced in the plant.
There's four that are iffy, there's two that are iffy.
There, there's four altogether that need, that should be replaced, I can get by, we just replace them two, for now.
What happens if those other two go bad?
Then we'll have to replace them.
But I mean, what would happen physically?
We couldn't, uh, the two that I definitely need replaced, um, they keep water flowing through the filters.
Okay.
The other two that we can get by with, if I can't open them or shut them off, they're either gonna continue to flush the intakes, or we can't flush the intakes, so then we're gonna be relying on the well.
Continue with the two.
But nothing drastic will happen, okay.
Next quarter, the other two.
Yes and no.
Because I'm just wondering, if, if they're not perfect, maybe we should be replacing them, I don't know.
In, in time, I'm going to recommend us replace all four, but definitely the two.
I'm gonna make a motion to replace two this quarter, then the next quarter payment, we will replace the other two.
So we have to add that to our agenda?
It's nicer when we're on the screen, it's not kept on the well.
Say that out loud, that we're gonna add whatever.
We are going to add, that we're gonna vote right now on, he needs four, we're gonna get two now, and the next quarter payments, we will get the other two.
They're valves, right?
The two valves.
I'm talking loud, cause of fairness.
Cast iron stainless, yes.
Uh, it'd be cast, cast iron. No, I was on a, uh, three-foot pipe wrench lifting myself off the ground, I'm two-hundred-and-seventy-six pounds, and it would literally turn the valve quarter inch with my weight on it.
All right.
Okay, you had your time, Joe, we're moving on.
Operator's report.
One, one other thing, uh, what the hell was it? Uh, um, the week of the fifteenth, we are doing a full system flush, um, we're gonna come in at night, at nine o'clock, and work through the night to minimize the dirt throughout the town, so the public's not getting up dirt during the day.
Uh, well, we should put a, maybe a paper notice or notice pop in.
Yeah, we need to do a paper notice.
I'm gonna ask that we do the SWIFT call, and I'm gonna ask Jamie to put it in the paper to help.
I mean, we should put it in the paper, a notice by the date, so people know, if they get up to dirty water, we're already taking care of it.
SWIFT call.
We're gonna do hydrants flow off storms, the entire system.
Justin, have we, have we used the SWIFT call system since the eight-one-four was added to the area go?
I don't know, that's, that's why we're gonna need to try it.
Okay, so we have to test the SWIFT?
That's why, um, we need to put it in the paper also, so it's, uh, both, both papers, uh, Jamie, uh-
What are both papers?
Carrier?
Carrier and, uh, whatever, the other one.
Daily Press.
Daily Press.
That'd be a good thing, use the phone thing, make sure it's all working and-
Yeah, we gotta make sure that works before we do anything.
Because we have to use eight-one-four now, so I don't know.
I, I believe it's already in the system for eight-one-four, I just found a big folder down, down there in the cabinet, stashed away.
You might want to bring that up here.
That has everything on SWIFT reached, so I'll get that to you guys either tomorrow, Monday.
Okay.
Well, do you do those changes on that call system down at your plant, or is it down there?
Your guess is good as mine.
You don't know?
We'll call, we'll call.
Um-
Okay, we're making notice for everybody.
Just know you live in all five towns in the community, it's the same night.
Everything, the whole-
The entire system.
Okay, that goes from county lines to-
In the system, whatever, J Township's water system, that's what we're doing, I can't make it any clearer now.
Just verify it.
You're gonna vote on what you added to the agenda?
We should.
Yep, I need, I need a vote, on the four, on the, uh, the valves.
The valves.
I need a vote.
Uh, make a motion that we go ahead and get two valves.
Now, and two later.
You're voting on what you added to the agenda?
To the agenda.
You're not voting for okay, the-
Well, put that on there, too, vote for, for both, because we have to have a vote, everybody got to talk.
Okay.
We'll vote for the-
But we're gonna add to the agenda, the valves that Justin needs.
Yes.
I make that motion, we add that to the agenda.
Okay, I need a second vote.
Uh, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You should break down two valves, that's what was-
Please be quiet while we're trying to conduct the meeting.
Yes, two valves.
All right, old business. Tap fees, you're working on the one, right? No, we didn't get the operator's report, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's Donovan's turn.
Donovan, your turn.
Oh, and Justin, can I ask you to call yours maintenance report, and, uh, have Donovan call his?
Yeah, I'll, I'll with my, uh, computer guys.
Okay, we'll smack 'em tomorrow, huh? Okay.
Okay, Donovan.
Okay, so you can see that we've got the distribution meter in there, that's the flow at the top, the first one was estimated off of the, between the unit withdrawals and the daily stream withdrawals, just verifying those numbers.
Good to be there.
Um, the metered is what has gone through the distribution meter, I'm not sure what they had this out, I wrote this Tuesday meeting. But in same order, we had the, uh, correspondence of DEP, uh, we submitted that public education with the changes, and a plan specifically for what we're going to do on each specific part of the law, uh, all numbers, all sub-paragraphs, everything. We did the core samples on each of the four media, for all the four, uh, filters while we were on exclusively the well. The plant was down, and I figured we weren't gonna have a better chance to get all four samples at the same time, so we took them. We should be able to actually mail that to Pittsburgh instead of having to drop it there.
All right.
Um, so I will, I have the address for you guys, I just need to have it-
Any special containers, or?
We have little plastic quart containers that are already in, so just a box of them, adding. Um, we did the first set of lead and copper samples that were only for the well. Uh, we just today collected eighteen out of twenty for the second set, which is the mix of the well and Kersey. Uh, we're planning on setting out the third set, um, which is both the streams, we have to figure out what valves we have to turn to mix everything, I'm pretty sure we have a pretty clear idea on that, but then we're doing a mix and everything with that, then we're gonna wait for two to three weeks to have the system get completely changed over, um, with all the water in the lines, uh, the flushing will help with that, and then we will take the third set, and then we should be good for lead and copper till April, till we have to do this all over again with the three sets and the three sources, because apparently they want it once in the fall, once in the spring, because the conditions are different for leaching, potentially, whatever. In my day-to-day, I'm not gonna go into that unless anyone has specific questions on anything.
I do have one question, Justin, about, um, I'm sorry, Donovan, abidabid, um, when you do flushing of the lines, is that gonna affect any of your, um, corrosion control readings, or affect any of your samples?
No, because we will have it all flushed, what we're basically doing is getting any water from the well out of the system, that's what we're attempting to do.
Okay, you're flushing it out so that you can use the other two sources, okay, gotcha.
That's what we're trying to, and it should greatly improve everybody's water quality that is currently having murky water from the air and that.
Good.
Thank you.
I have one question for you, Donovan.
Yes.
This, uh, air compressor motor, the pot fire, this was the electric motor?
Yes.
Okay, did you guys have to use a, a fire extinguisher on it?
Did we? I don't believe so, it burned itself out.
Oh, did?
Yes.
Well, you say have an extinguisher rechecked, then?
Yeah, um, yeah, we got that replaced, and it's running fine. Currently, we are running one or the other compressor when we are not there, just in case something else happens, because if we run alternating, for some reason, it kicks alarms, so we are going to have the guy to put that motor in, double-check that to see why it's doing.
Hopefully, you put the same type back in.
Okay, we're going to old business. Tap fees, uh, the only question I have on the tap fees, uh, we're not gonna hook anymore on in California yet?
No.
That's the only one we're gonna fix, and-
Yeah, we're gonna fix that, the other guy wants to hold off, uh, he wants to see people, uh,
Okay.
Do the, may, the most of the digging and stuff himself to make the cost a lot cheaper.
Okay. All right, job discretion is on hold.
For Colton, Colton Sharp.
Yeah, that's short, where are we at with him?
That's the one that-
That's the one we're waiting, okay, we're waiting on. Rules and regulations, we should have it written up next week?
Yep.
The new, the way, the new?
Yep, and then we'll send Christine a copy.
Not news, we're just re, relooking at it again.
Send Christine.
Yeah. Okay, and we got a vote on to move that down back down to the township, the meetings.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve moving the water meeting to the township building.
Effective when?
Next month, next meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Each, each group billing for the Forest Project, we're still going over them bills?
No resolutions been had on that.
No, we're still going-
The bills keep accumulating for some reason that we're not aware of, so we need to investigate.
Investigate. We're going over them all.
Right.
The feasibility study, I'm pretty sure.
The feasibility study needs to be completed, uh, for corrosion control.
One-one of twenty-one, you have written on here?
Yeah, one-one twenty-one.
It's the date, due date?
Yes, the date, yeah, and, um, each group will probably work-
Each group said they'll have it done by the end of the month?
I'm sorry, twenty-two, yes, twenty-two.
All right, and, uh, the paper that we do have from each group says it will be done by the end of the month.
This month.
This month. So we should be good.
I just sent him a ten-page paper of all different source water, stream studies, and a couple different system studies as well for pH, calcium, corrosion, all sorts of stuff, so, it was what he requested, I found it, so.
All right.
He's got everything we need, okay. And the consent order, we all talked about that, that are down here.
Oh, we forgot about Sprendale CBDs.
That's, uh, waiting for the meters.
We have the meters.
We, we have the meters.
We have the meters?
We don't have.
I'm waiting for two things.
Did you get all the meters done?
I, I have all the meters in, I don't have none of them started putting in, um, I'm waiting for the MXUs to come in, they're still in back order, and I'm waiting for either Sharon to come back to, uh, so she's familiar with the system, or get Nancy familiar with the system, so whenever I start activating meters, we can put them in the system, everything will be good, we can just, when it's time to read meters, we can read.
So you're gonna start sooner or later?
Um, once I get the MXUs and, uh, either Nancy or Sharon's here to understand the system.
Yeah, there's been no word from Sharon, so there's no update on that.
Because right now, uh, I update everything in the system, they have to put it in the computer, Nancy doesn't know how to do that, and then I'll just throw the billing completely out of whack. This way, I can still go out and touch, read everything, what we have.
Nancy will work on that this week, see how we do that.
Well, we'll see, we'll see about that.
Oh, I wanted, we skipped over the resolution vote, I wanted to make sure that got done, number four.
Rules and regulations?
Oh, we-
Why, you didn't do three and two yet?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't, never mind.
Yeah, we did two.
I jumped ahead.
We did four.
Yeah, I, I jumped down here.
We did three, yeah, you went down to the bottom.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
And we voted on the J Township, going to J Township?
Yes, we did.
Okay, dis, distribution, distribution meter is updated and done, right?
Yep.
Okay, that's all done and in there, all done, we got paid back from insurance.
I gave you those pictures of the insurance question.
Yeah, I got that, and, um, I just have a few more of those pictures to print.
Okay.
With the printer we don't have.
We have to send the pictures in.
And I have the letter from the lawyer and everything, you know, they're gonna pay that bill for that, so it's right there, so it'll be going out the door, hopefully, I'm gonna tell them to bring a printer Monday.
Good.
So-
Yeah, we do need that.
I told them to cancel the one that was on order, I don't know what the holdup is, but-
That's been about four months.
Yeah.
Just get while we need it, we can't monkey around not having it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on new business. The budget workshop, we had one a week ago, and we're gonna have another one, if we wanna send a date, we have to have another one, we went over it, and we're gonna have to go over it again.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have a, another workshop on that.
Are you making the date now, I'll get the calendar.
Yeah, get the calendar.
It'd be good, yes.
It's on my, uh, it's on the bulletin board above my phone.
Something that I don't know that was ever resolved at the last meeting, Linda, you brought up, I don't know if they ever voted on it or whatever, the restraining orders.
Yes.
Oh.
We should, we'll vote on that, right after this new business, before we leave here tonight.
We'll have to add that to the-
We'll have to, we're add that?
We have to add it.
We're add it to the thing and everything.
Let's add that to the agenda, the restraining orders for-
We're add that for number nine at the end, right at the end.
That would be for-
Number nine is the valves.
So this will be ten.
Number ten will be the restraining.
That's for Linda Quinn and who else?
Stacy.
Uh, Stacy and Jim Huff.
And Jim Huff.
There's three, so we just keep the four.
Um, I, I make a motion to add that restraining order removal for Stacy, Jim Huff, and Linda, uh, to the agenda.
Okay, I make the motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's on ten.
That's ten.
Okay.
Number nine?
Ten.
Oh, number ten.
Okay, you got the time, do we have a time for the budget workshop?
Well, we're getting close to Turkey Day, so you know.
We better do it.
Not interrupting that.
And you're, you're working on the quotes, what we need for the off down there, right? You're working on the chemicals, like-
That was the big one.
We didn't know the full cost, so we couldn't put nothing in there.
Um, what about Monday the fifteenth?
Monday the 15th. I, I don't have any objections.
Okay.
I can get you the numbers, but I doubt we'll be...
That's also the day that those guys are up all night.
Yeah, we, I mean...
Oh, that's not good.
We don't wanna do that.
Well, we don't need these guys to do the budget.
If I can, if I can get you the numbers that you were...
Yeah, they don't have to be at the budget meeting, okay?
We'll just do another Monday, go the next Monday.
Well, that's, that's Thanksgiving week, and I won't be here that day. How about, uh...
How about a Friday?
Wednesday the 17th?
Wednesday's good for me, I mean, anything...
I have no problem with that.
We're gonna be up all night if you guys want us.
This night?
All, all, all that week.
Oh, okay, well, then let's do it, um, Wednesday the 10th.
Next week.
How's that, next week, 10?
That's, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, at, uh, uh, 6:00, 5:30, 5:00?
Uh, anytime after, anytime after 5:00, 5:00.
Julie, you pick.
5:00.
5:00 budget redo.
Yep.
And that's gonna be, uh, 11? What's the...
Do we have to do that as another public meeting if we were...
Nope, just a workshop.
Another public workshop?
You, you can have it a work, public one if you want.
Yeah, as a workshop.
We did.
They can come, but you don't necessarily have to, except for coming.
What's that date?
That's November 10th on a Wednesday.
11-10.
At 5:00.
So we'll have to advertise that, yeah.
Are you gonna be here or up at the...
For that, we'll be here. If that sounds good, we'll just be here.
Yeah, we'll be here, because we haven't...
We're gonna be here, 'cause we got paperwork there.
We're not moving till the next...
We're not moving till the next meeting anyway. So, that'll be next week. Okay. The credit cards?
Uh...
Credit cards?
Yeah, the credit card update is that, uh, First Commonwealth corporate cards, uh, there are people who have them who no longer work here. We have the physical cards, but their name is still in the paperwork at the bank. So we're having that removed, and we're adding, um...
Donovan?
Donovan for 500, Justin has 500, and Nancy for 500. That way we can, um...
A thousand.
A thousand, oh, Nancy for a thousand?
They're both a thousand, and Justin's was a thousand, I seen.
No, Justin's is 500.
Okay, the other two were a thousand, I think.
Yeah, the other two were a thousand.
Okay.
All right.
And, uh...
One, two, them three, we're gonna have a call.
The people that aren't here anymore will remove their names.
Will remove their names, it's, uh, Patrick, Stacy, and who was the other one?
That's it, Patrick and Stacy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. The new lawyer.
What's the lock situation?
The what?
The lock situation was all going on.
I believe I have all the keys, I believe.
Oh, okay.
We decided we would hold off until there's a new secretary anyway, and then...
Yeah.
Uh, we'll get new, a new key made, perhaps?
Did the secretary resign, or...
No, it's unclear what's happening. She's supposed to return on the 10th, until the 10th...
No, no, she isn't supposed to, she's just under a doctor's care till the 10th and possibly beyond.
And possibly could return on the 10th, it says, and...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number three?
Unless we get an extension, that's the way it'll be.
It's kind of a limbo situation.
Yeah.
Okay, new lawyer?
Uh...
We have two of them that we're looking at right now?
We do have two we're looking at right now.
And, uh, we got one, got the letter back, and the other one we're waiting for, right?
That's correct.
Go ahead, Julie, you can give that.
Okay, the new lawyers are, uh, John Ryan from Clearfield. Uh, he sent a letter of interest, but he's not able to begin until, uh, the 1st of the year. And, uh, Stephanie Farah recommended a man named Nathaniel Schmidt, who is also a, um, municipality's attorney, and, uh, I've contacted him, I have not had any feedback, he was in court, so, uh, I'll get back with him this week.
Where is he from?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. It's 726, it's 814-726 number, but Stephanie is where, Nancy?
She's, uh, outside, like Cranberry, Donby.
Is it her same firm?
No, no, no.
No.
It's a different, okay.
Yeah, it's a different, so I'm not quite sure, I haven't thought to him yet.
Okay.
Separate.
Okay.
Yeah, they thought there'd be a conflict, so we didn't do that.
Resolution vote.
Okay, the resolution vote, this is something that, um, I contacted DEP about. Every, um, legal action such as the COA needs to have a resolution voted on, and we didn't vote on it in public. We signed it, but we didn't vote on it in public. So I wanted to make a motion that, um, makes it legal, that we are, we would, had every intention of signing all the paperwork, but we didn't have it at the time.
Yeah, the lawyer forgot to send it.
So we need to vote on it right now?
We need to vote on signing the resolution, even though it's already signed, but now we can date it.
Keep our ducks in a row.
Right.
Okay, I need a vote.
And, and so I make that motion that we sign that resolution?
Okay, I make the motion? Got a second?
Who's seconding?
I don't know, whoever wants to second.
I second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
That just makes it legal.
Okay. Each group billing, and we're working on that.
Right.
The feasibility study, we talked about that. Okay, and then we're gonna go on the consent order, we talked about that.
About that?
The which one?
Feasibility study.
That's the one we're sending to the each group. That's the one we're working with the each group, and Donovan's taking care of it.
Donovan's working with, uh, Brian Bloom.
Force project, it says on it.
No, that's a bill that we have.
What?
That's a bill.
They're, they've sent us several bills that we feel are not ours, that we feel like we have paid that project, but we've gotten two bills since that we don't feel we should be paying, so it's a back and forth and back and forth, and it's continuing.
Is this for the force project?
Little of both.
Both?
Little of both, yes.
I wasn't questioning that, I asked, you said number six, you're working on it, what, what is the feasibility study for?
Okay, the feasibility, oh, it is, um, in the consent order 4B, corrosion control feasibility study by January 1st, 2022. The authority shall submit to the department in writing a corrosion control treatment, feasibility study, along with applicable fees that meets minimum requirements of the basic feasibility study under 25 code 109 dash, dash, 1102 B, 3, and I, and includes the following monitoring data. Well, anyway, that's something that Donovan is working on with Brian.
Number nine?
Change one.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay, number nine, we're changing the, we have to vote on...
Uh, ordering the valves?
Okay, we did that.
Oh.
We, we already ordered the valves, that's done. Nine, we ordered the valves, 10, we have to vote on that right now.
Excuse me, wait a minute.
We didn't order, we didn't vote on it.
You haven't voted on the valves yet. What's number seven?
Seven is Burnell.
They're waiting for...
We just talked about that, we're waiting for the...
MXUs.
MSUs.
That's the MXUs.
Didn't you say you had all the meters?
I have the meters.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the MXUs.
That's the second part of it.
Mm-hmm, so when we get them, we can start.
And they're in back order till when? Don't know.
Until they start, uh, letting ships come in and stop, they start getting little computer chips.
They're out in the boats.
Yeah.
They're out there somewhere, huh? Okay.
Anything else, Christine, you need to know?
No, you're just kinda confusing, you're on the agenda, you're on what now? Number nine?
We gotta vote on the...
Julie, what number are we on now?
I think we are on the valves, we need to vote, we added it to the agenda, now we need to vote on the cast iron valves, two of them, to purchase for...
I make a motion that we get two this quarter and get two for the next quarter.
I second?
I have a question.
All in favor?
Number 5.
Yeah.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, I have a question, these gate valves are prone to problems, did you ever consider a ball valve?
Ball valves would affect the flow too quickly, causing water hammer that could affect the pipes, yes.
They are less...
Okay, number 10?
Number 10 is, um, removing the restraining order.
And number 10 and last, retain, remove the retaining order.
Restraining order, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to remove the restraining order.
For Stacy, Linda, and Jim Huff.
For Stacy, Linda, and Jim Huff.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, who did those, Linda? Who was the attorney?
Vavino?
Oh, okay, that Vavino did them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have issues with...
I, I can look it up.
'Cause otherwise, actually, she's not allowed to be here.
I'm sorry?
Uh, it's public means she can't, she's kind of public.
Well, okay. Well, anyways, anything else before we go to adjournment? Anybody got anything else?
I didn't do a damn thing.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you for bearing with us on our broken printer and our filling in and not knowing at all, thank you.
Okay, next month we're gonna be over to another place.
That's correct.
Yeah, next month we'll be back to township.
Hey, it'll be snowing, y'all, I'll be happy.
I'm hoping tomorrow. She's calling me in the morning to make sure it's in the warehouse, and if it is, I'm going to, uh...